Good evening. This regular meeting of the Lone Star College Board of Trustees is now called in order at 5:00 P. M. Today, I'm filling in for trustee Stoma, who had a conflict, a scheduled conflict with work-related schedule conflict. So I will begin with roll call. Trustee Pierce?
President.
Trustee Wilson? Trustee Bo? Trustee Saldivar?
Present.
Trustee Bozard? Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Kane?
Present.
And I'm here. So that's it. Thank you. We don't have, we don't have a mic on Zoom by any chance, no? Okay. I thought I asked. At this time, I will invite you to join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Certification of the posting. Chancellor Castillo, could you please provide certification as to posting?
Yes, sir. I certify that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Mike, has anyone signed up for, to offer a public comment?
No, sir. No one is registered to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. We will move now to the next agenda item, which is, I guess, introductions. Chancellor Castillo, do you have any introductions or special guests?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. And now, okay, at this, at this point, we will approve the minutes of the February 1st to 2024 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? We have a motion and we have a second. Okay, discussion. With the mo, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, minutes signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and approved. Okay. So now we go to special reports and announcements. Chancellor Castillo, do you have any special reports or announcements?
I have, yes, sir, I have a few. So on February 9th, we had the employees' award ceremony at the Marriott. It was a great event. We had hundreds of people there, celebrated, I think, three 45-year recipients, which is pretty remarkable. One of them actually was there. So to put that in perspective, I just turned 40. So that person, so that, yes. So that person has been at Lone Star longer than I've been alive. What an accomplishment, huh? So we also went to, trustees went along with myself and a few staff members to the 2024 ACCT National Legislative Summit from February 4th to 7th. So I'm very happy to report that we met with five of those congressional delegations. Four of the congresspeople themselves made time for us during very busy time and the chief of staff of one of them. And so we're starting to make enrons on that. We also met with our lobbyist. And so we're going to get on the national allocation model appropriations. That's what I'm looking for appropriations model to start soliciting money from the federal government and make sure that we're not leaving money on the table on that end. And we've got a few things working on that. We had the February and March watts. So we've had two watts since the last board meeting. The next one is April 19th at Cyfair. We also had the board retreat last Friday and we had the retiree celebration on February 27th. Forthcoming events. Spring break, ladies and gentlemen, is from March 11th to March 15th. I'm sure most of you don't have to be told twice, but just in case, spring break, March 11th through March 15th. If you show up to the buildings and you can't get in, you're doing something wrong. All right. And then we have the spring holiday from March 29th to March 31st. And I do want to make one last thing. We have, I think, Dr. Pierce and I, trustee Pierce and I are going to the purview installation of their new president on March 22nd at the personal invitation of Dr. LeGrand. So we're going to be there for that to represent this institution. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mario. Okay, presidents, this is one of our favorite parts where we get to hear from you guys. And Dr. Reedhart, please produce, proceed to the podium for your presentation.
Good afternoon, trustees, Chancellor Castillo and all of our esteemed guests. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to highlight our international studies program. The program has created a comprehensive model which includes three primary components: international curriculum and co-curriculum, activities, international student services, study abroad and virtual exchange experiences. In this semester, spring 2024, we are currently serving over 120 countries with our student enrollment. The goal of the program is to enhance student learning, build awareness, broaden perspectives and prepare students for the global job marketplace. As of spring 24, we have over 217 faculty members who have internationalized their courses, impacting 33,742 students. Our students have the choice of taking individual courses for enhanced learning or to seek an area of concentration with their degree. Our Global Scholars Language and Culture Program, which was established in 2019 and housed within our Honors College, is designed to provide dynamic intercultural learning experiences and an international studies core course curriculum to ensure our graduates are well-positioned to live, work, compete and collaborate in an increasingly globalized work world. There are two honor tracks available for students. One that is research-based and our second one, which will begin in fall 2024, is the International Business Track. Our Study Abroad and Virtual Exchange Program allows our students to take courses internationally and receive college credit. Our internationalized co-curricular and scholarship provides students with activities and scholarships to further advance their academic studies. Again, this is just a visual depiction of our enrollment over the years. Since 2019, the top chart reflects our headcount and the bottom are our course enrollment datas. In spring of 2024, we have 2,469 international students enrolled. What makes us first in class with our international studies program? We are the top four bright sender. The, the program is the largest fellowship program for U.S. scholars. Being a four bright scholar means our students are among the best and the brightest and Lone Star is the top sender. In 2023, we were also named the four bright Hispanic serving institution leader. Also in 2023, we were, we were, we received the Outstanding Delegation and Distinguished Delegation Award from National Model U.N. The Global Solutions Sustainability Challenge, which is an online interactive challenge, is sponsored by the Aspen Institute, I'm sorry, administered by the Aspen Institute, funded by the Department of State and supported by the Bezos Family Foundation and the governments of Morocco and the United Arab Emirates. This competition has since become a central part of the honors and global scholars curriculum. Additionally, Lone Star won the Paul Simon Award, which is another prestigious international award that is only offered every 10 years. And we were one of the recipients for it. It's going to open up in a couple of years and we're hoping to win it once again. The Community College for International Development is the largest not-for-profit organization dedicated to comprehensive international programs. It provides our students with internships, job fairs, virtual exchange program with our partners, the full bike training for our students and faculty and CCID delegations with the Department of State and the Department of Education. In addition, we also host our International Education Biennial Symposium. It's a two-part event for both our Lone Star College faculty and students. Part one is a networking opportunity for faculty to enter, to interact with international partners and learn how to internationalize their courses. Part two is a student, our students get to participate in a poster and art sessions to showcase the work and what they've learned in the international program. We also have business track articulation agreements that were established through our CCID partnership. We have developed an articulation agreement with Renan School of Business in France and with the International University of Rabat in Morocco. Our students can transfer with an associate's degree from Lone Star and complete an English bachelor's degree in one accelerated academic year at the low cost of $7,000 to $10,000, which includes their living expense and scholarships. They also have access to U.S. federal student aid and in-country grants. Finally, we have our LSC International Business Institute, IBI for international, internationalizing business studies. And that's a partnership with Brigham Young, George Washington University and the University of Washington. They, they offer, they offer interactive seminars to our faculty annually and our students. Now, what I really want to highlight is the Jack Cook Kent Foundation. Between the years of 2021 and 2023, Lone Star had the highest number of semifinalists for this prestigious award and 100% of the student finalists were a part of our international studies program. In 2022, we were awarded the Ideas Grant. The purpose of the grant is to increase and diversify education abroad for U.S. students, for, I'm sorry, for U.S. studies. Additionally, our students, four of our students were awarded the Paris Engineering Institute Award. They were allowed to go over there and complete, completes their master's degree, fully paid with a professional internship. We also offered the French Embassy-sponsored summer bootcamps. We started doing that in 2017 and I have a list. It offers a short-term summer bootcamp for our students over in France and you can see some of our students that recently won the award. We also have another scholarship opportunity for our students through the Irish Consulate of Austin and I S E Virtual Exchange Scholarship. Our students are allowed to go over to Ireland and study the history and culture, past and present, as a platform for an intensive comparative study across disciplines in history, literature, social ju, social justice, environment and sustainability, business, politics and social issues. We also have offered our students the Benjamin A. Gilman International Scholarship. And what you see in front of you right now are our students who won this award last year. Some students won the 4,000 and some won the 5,000 award. We have the Community Activism and Social Entrepreneurship Scholarship. Again, it's another opportunity for our students to go abroad and study. We also have the Critical Language Scholarship Program, which is a Mandarin scholarship and it focuses on languages that are essential to engagement in the world. Not only do our students have the opportunity to benefit from the different scholarship opportunities, our faculty also get to participate and apply for different awards. What you have in front of you are faculty international escalation, exploration award in summer 2023 and it lists the faculty that won it from what campus they belong to. And then summer 2024, we have these faculty members about to go do study abroad exploration. Now, what will our students be doing in 2024? You have a list of all of the places our students are about to go. They're going to Morocco, Philippines, Japan, the French Caribbean Boot Camp, Barcelona, Ireland. We're working on internationalized capstone trip with Loyola University. Has not been disclosed where that trip will be yet, but we should know soon. And we have South Korea in progress. We are doing, we are providing amazing opportunities for our students. Now I want to just share some pictures of different places that our students have been. And next up are just pictures on campus for my International Education Week where our students get to learn and, and share what they've learned. I do want to acknowledge, give special acknowledgement to Dr. Katie Caruso and her entire team who makes all of this work possible through all of the hard work connections and partnerships that they have established for us over the years. Thank you. Any questions?
Trustees, any questions? Incredible programs. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm going to just say this was an awesome presentation and it's good to see that we are expanding abroad so people will know who we are, you know, near. So, good job.
Thank you.
I wanted to say, I was going to say that too. It's exceptional. I really, it's, it's just exceptional. That's all I can say.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a.
Thank you.
I have a.
Yes, go ahead. We have one more.
I'm just curious, how does our program for international students stand up to four-year college programs?
Well, when I had my discussion with Katie about it, we are actually, in the state of Texas, our program is a lot stronger than some of the other programs. It is not common for community colleges to have such a program. I tried to do research to find out how many community colleges in the state of Texas actually have it. In our local areas, only, I was only able to find one and that was San Jacinto. And so when you think about everything that we do with our programs, I will say we, we rival the best four-year institutions out there. It's, it's, it's hard to do. It's complicated. You have all of the requirements for our international students coming over here for our students to study abroad, but we do a fabulous job with it. And I, I would argue, and it's anecdotal, that we compare to any four-year institution with our international program.
As I suspected.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Bergdahl, are you here? There he is. Let me see you. Go ahead and come up for your special now, for your presentation.
Let me see. Believe it or not, I've got one of these going on today, too. There we go. Great. Hi, so I am Dr. John Berguff and I'm the president of AFT Lone Star College. And I have a presentation for you that I was intending to give last month, but the wonderful COVID virus decided that I needed a one-week enforced stay at home. And so I am doing this a little bit late. I want to share with you tonight about the climate survey that we conducted in the fall. This survey was conducted during the months of October and November. So what I'm going to share with you tonight is a snapshot of the reality as it was at that point. Usually when we do these, there's not a lot of changes between the end of the fall and the middle of the spring, but there are some things that have been changing around the college that actually you'll see a reflection of, of data and how that relates in. So you'll be seeing that. We have kind of a large data set, so, and I don't want to impose on too much of your time. So I'm going to split this and share part of the data this time and a little bit more of it with you next time. So it's not, so you're not here too long. So let me get you started here a little bit. First of all, we had a total of 1,219 responses. That is, in fact, the largest number of responses we've had to any of the surveys we've done over the last several years. So we're really pleased with that. And it does represent all categories of employees. 267 full-time faculty, 263 adjunct faculty, 461 full-time staff. That's the largest number of people that responded. 166 part-time staff and 62 administrators. So the data that I want to show you today is data that is system-wide. It's disaggregated by the type of employee group. So I'll be talking about each one of these five groups and what they had to say. Besides coming from all employee groups, we also represented, our respondents represented pretty much all of the campuses and work sites in the system. I know this is really, really small print and, but I just wanted to illustrate that every campus was presented, was represented. And also System Office was very well represented, both here and at UP, both. We have some of the information disaggregated by campus and I'm still working on sort of organizing that. My plan, though, is I'd like to share that information with the college presidents first so that they have a chance to look at it, just because I think that'd be a fair thing to do. Everything that you're seeing tonight, I've already shared with Chancellor Castillo. So I'm going to share with you some of the questions that we asked and why we asked them and what the responses were. The first question we asked was, what does respect in the workplace look like to you? So our goal with this question was to get a sense of what our employees feel makes them, makes them feel most valued, welcomed, included, respected, all of those words. What makes you feel good about the place that you work? We want to see what makes the difference between someone who's here and giving, just excited to be here and giving everything they have versus someone who's so distracted by problems they have at work that they really can't give it 100%. So I want to share the results that we got to this question based from each faculty group. First of all, from full-time faculty. I'm going to show you the four most common responses that we got. I'll share, I'll share with you what the other possible responses were as well. So the number one most commonly stated statement of what respect in the workplace looks like to you is assurance that your concerns will be taken seriously and without reprisal. 78% of full-time faculty chose that as, as an option. I, I should say, by the way, that, this was on the previous slide. Faculty could choose up to five, so these percentages will add up to over 100. The second one is closely related. Transparency in policies and decision-making, 77%, just right behind that. Not things like pay, not things like benefit, but the sense of being valued and that things are transparent. Coming in third was flexible work options. Still two-thirds of faculty looking for that and higher pay. The other options that we had made available to folks that did not show up as often were availability of tenure, which really didn't get a great deal of interest, opportunities for advancement, an open-door policy in communication with your supervisor, which ties in with some of these others rather well, shared governance, social opportunities at work and more employee benefits. And by that, we were referring to things other than healthcare because those are taken care of by the state. So those all came in lower. Actually, at the very bottom was social opportunities at work. So people are not actually looking for parties. So let me show you about our adjunct faculty. The priorities here are a little bit different and I don't think you'll be surprised. They had the same options as full-time faculty. The number one concern was higher pay and followed very closely behind by opportunities for advancement. And I'm sure you can relate to why those would be important to adjunct faculty. But coming in third was the same one that had high marks among full-time faculty. Assurances that your concerns will be taken seriously and without reprisal. Again, over a half. And an open-door policy in communicating with your supervisor. Again, over a half. So you're going to see some common themes here as we look at different employee groups. And I think that's very interesting and important. So we're going to move to full-time staff, which actually had the largest number of responses altogether. Again, the top four responses to the question, what does respect work, look, mean to you in the workplace? Number one for staff was flexible work options at 75%. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Close behind that, just 1% behind assurance that your concerns will be taken seriously and without reprisal. And I believe we've heard that one already. Higher pay. Transparency in policies and decision-making. So again, kind of notice there's some themes that are common across all of our employees. This is part-time staff. Number one concern, assurances that your concerns will be taken seriously and without reprisal. An open-door policy in communicating with your supervisor. Flexible work options. Transparency in policies and decision-making. And finally, from the administrators who responded, we got the following responses. Transparency in policies and decision-making. Flexible work options. Assurances that your concerns will be taken seriously and without reprisal. Open-door policy, communication with your supervisor. As you can see, assurances that your concerns will be taken seriously and without reprisal shows up in the top four for every employee group. That's the thing that universally unites employees as a major point of concern and a sign of respect. This comes up over and over and over again. We see it in the comments as well. The other item that shows up on four of the five categories is flexible work options. The adjunct faculty didn't mention that. They have sort of, I guess, the ultimate in flexible work. That's not necessarily a good thing, I'm afraid, but, but they've got that. But for everything else, that, that issue came up a lot. So I want to delve into that. Our, our survey had some things to say about that as well. What flexible work would mean is going to be a different animal when you're talking about faculty versus staff and administration. So our questions to faculty and staff were a little bit different. For faculty, we asked this question. If changes were made to workload policy, what would you personally be interested in? And here's a chart that shows what they came up with, what was mentioned here. And I want to highlight that the one that is mentioned most often is the option to teach more than half my teaching load online. And here, the timing of the survey is really important. This, the data was finished in mid-November. There was a former policy that, our former procedure within the college that full-time faculty could teach no more than half of their load online. With the changing demographics of our students, that was not really matching what the student demand was. But Chancellor Castillo was aware of this and that policy has since changed. That restriction is no longer in place. Instead, it, it has been delegated down to the colleges to make decisions about online workload based on student need. And that obviously is the right first priority, obviously, what, what the students are demanding. So to a large degree, that one has been solved. A reduction in maximum class size. We're not talking about being lazy here and wanting fewer students, but typically a full-time professor may teach as many as 150 students and, or more perhaps. And that does not necessarily always give us the, the attention that we can give to our students. Some of these others, there's a discussion of putting, you know, giving full-time faculty the option of choosing to teach six classes instead of five as their load, where the sixth one would be for a higher pay, a prorated rate. That's just in a discussion stage, as I understand it. There's some interest in that. Creating different hybrid options. That refers to, is my class going to be 50% online and 50% face-to-face or 60, 40 or 90, 10? Some flexibility there is important. And there are some folks that, 20% that say, hmm, I like things just the way they are. So this is what flexible work can mean for faculty. Now we're going to ask a similar question to our staff, both full-time and part-time. If flexible workload policies were to be adopted, which of the following work options do you think would benefit you personally? And we had some options here and staff were allowed to pick up to four. And here's the results we have for this. The thing that is, the, the option that came up most often was a hybrid work option to teach, to, excuse me, not to teach, but to work on campus some days and to work at home others. The most high category was two to four days a work, a week remote, followed closely by an on-campus option, but four days a week, much like we do in the summer. Hybrid work, one day a week, comes up pretty high. And alternative workdays, for example, like negotiating every other Friday off. The one point that I especially want to make is when flexible workload is mentioned, where people's minds often go is, oh, everyone wants to work at home all the time. And I want to show on the chart here that that's a very small minority of folks that are looking for that option. More folks are interested in some sort of hybrid where they're here some and not here some. Now, obviously, this is a complicated thing. I know it's being worked on and I appreciate that very much. I think we're going to be hearing more about that in the next few months. They, there's a lot of details to work out. Not every job can be done. There's a lot of details to work out. Not every job can be done at home. Our police folks probably can't do their policing at home. And there are other folks who are in similar situations. But I do believe that employees are glad that this is on the table for discussion at least. And these are the kind of options that employees or our full-time staff particularly believe they could work with. We asked the same question of part-time staff, exact same question. The answers were similar, just a little bit different. You can see some of the same options. There were more part-time staff interested in 100% remote work and more interested in traditional 100% on-campus work. So that's a little bit different, and I'm not quite sure what to make of that. But you do see that the hybrid work option is something that people find appealing. So that's a little bit about remote work. Another question we asked, and we asked this question last year in about the same way, is just a general, how happy are you at Lone Star College? This is the last question I'm going to show you tonight. Last year, we asked basically the same question. And you might remember that the phrase started to come up of the lost quarter. Last year, we were finding about a quarter of employees feeling either very or somewhat unhappy working at Lone Star. And that meant 75% were basically happy, but still, that's a pretty large percent. And we wanted to track where that was. So again, we asked the same question a year later of each category, and these are the results that we have here. Full-time faculty, first up. This represents a total of 78% of faculty saying that they are somewhat are very happy working at Lone Star College. Actually, I'm going to focus on the positive first, and I'll come back to the low end of the spectrum at the end. So among full-time faculty, 78% somewhat are very happy. I think that's a good number that we can certainly try to move the needle on, but it's a good place to be. Adjunct faculty, this is pretty amazing. 90% of adjunct faculty say that they are either somewhat are very happy working here. That's quite a testimony to what we as Lone Star are able to do for some very vulnerable employees, that they feel so happy here. Full-time staff. Of all of our groups, full-time staff were, expressed the more misgivings, more misgivings. Just under 70% report being very or somewhat happy at Lone Star College. With, as you can see, a higher band in the somewhat happy. That's still good, but a little bit behind the other categories, you'll see. Part-time staff, again, about 90% somewhat are very happy. Versus, oh, I forgot to say that we put in the category meh for meaning disorder neutral. You know, como sea, como sea, mas o menos. Somewhat unhappy, very unhappy. Administrators also, positive results, 79% indicating they're very or somewhat happy. I want to notice there that we had got no administrators who said that they were very unhappy here. So that's really, that's a very positive thing. And going back through this, if you look at the two lower categories, the two that we looked at last year as the ones we were concerned about, somewhat unhappy or very unhappy. In every one of these categories, that number is now below 10%. Except for full-time staff, one is just slightly above 10%. So the needle is moving in the right direction. And I think the fact that we have begun to have discussions about things like workload and decision-making, and that our current administration has been so open in holding Watts and other outreach efforts to get input from faculty and staff is beginning to move the needle in the right direction. So that is really, really positive. What comes next? There is more that I have to come that I want to share with you next time. Among the questions that I want to bring up next time are what we asked both faculty and staff to identify any internal or external threats that worry you. And this is not necessarily something completely within the confines of Lone Star, but might come into the campus. What immediately jumped out to us when we just took a glance at the data back in November, and I've already reported on this, is there's a lot of concern about mental health issues among students. I'm going to share with you some more things when I come back next time. We also asked some questions about pay increases other than COLA. Would employees find any interest in some additional payment method other than just simply raising a certain percent every year? And finally, how are, do you as an employee feel that you're treated by your supervisor, by the administration on your campus, and by the system administration? All of this data is currently in our latest edition of The Advocate. If you want a sneak peek, get a quick look. But I will say a few more things about all of those things later. But this is what I wanted to share with you so far, and I'm going to stop right there. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be very happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Bergdahl. Any questions, trustees? Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate the information, and it's certainly new to me. I'm assuming it's new to all of us up here. But my question slash comments more to the chancellor than it is to you, and I just mean that because this is where I'm headed. We're two things as a system. I think we're students. I think we're teachers. Part-time, full-time, doesn't matter. They're teachers, educators. So while we're hearing from the teacher educator side, how do we make sure that in the long run, as we evaluate what to do with this information, that we listen to our students? Do they want hybrid? Do they want the different issues? How would they react? And I just want to know what your initial thoughts are on that, how to move forward and what to do.
Yeah, so the students already tell us, and they tell us what their feet and their clicks, right? So you can tell what a student wants by what they enroll in. And so, for example, when you change the modality of a class from face-to-face to online, and you lose students, they're telling you that they didn't want the online section. When you have an online section, and you switch it face-to-face, and you lose students, it's quite clear they didn't want the face-to-face section. So we already have all that data. So that's what Dr. Bergdahl noted earlier, when we talk about sort of loosening the standards by which we restrict faculty teaching, particularly in the summers where we're starting. We have the data from previous summers. For example, the students were telling us that a artificial requirement to allocate classes in a certain way by the prior administration wasn't necessarily what the students wanted. And so what we've done now, what I've done, is I've delegated it down to the people closest to the building of sections, closest to the tracking of enrollment and our enrollment management experts. And those folks can tell you almost unequivocally right away, this is a class, this is a section that we need online, this is a class or a section that we need face-to-face or hybrid. And so that's how we track it, sir, and that's how we intend to track it over the summer. And that's why we're rolling it out over the summer first, so that we can figure out exactly how, as Dr. Bergdahl said, students are at the center of the decision, right? And one of the things that I've made very clear, and I'll say publicly on the record, is if I can help faculty members leave, lead a more freedom-inducing teaching load while helping students, I'm all about that. But we have to help students. And so we're not going to allow any employee, faculty, or staff to put themselves before students, and you have my commitment on that.
Thank you. That's a very thorough answer. I appreciate your approach.
Anyone else?
I was going to say, John, I do, I really like what you're presenting to us, and it is an eye-opener. You know, so that we, and I'm glad that it's happening, and like you said, that the needle is going in the right direction now. That's what impressed me.
Yes, very clear. Great. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dr. Bergdahl. Appreciate it, as always. Okay, we're, this part of the agenda is where the trustees get opportunity to give us any special reports, activities, announcements. And I'll go first, if it's okay, just a quick, hey, now that I'm here, might as well do it, right? So I just wanted, you know, we had our board retreat, annual board retreat, and very impressed, very pleased. And I know I speak for others as well, where I say that we appreciate all the work by staff. There was a lot of work, and we could see it. I mean, it was a deep dive into the work that you guys did, and so we're very impressed. And we also know we're going to, there's a lot more work to do, right? And, you know, when Mario, Mario came on board as chancellor, and at a good time. And by good time, I mean difficult time. It was a challenging period. As y'all know, that it's, you know, part of his effort or part of his task was to implement new budgeting allocation model to address HPA, right? So we got to see some of that work, some of the things that had to happen to get us where we are now, you know, since August, right? So that's what I'm talking about. And then the other aspect of it is, early on, when Mario would share his teaching approach, he would talk about that it aligns with the Aspen model. And, you know, Aspen, the Aspen Pride people. You know, and of course, I had to look it up a little bit more to see what exactly is that. And I think they referred to it as the Oscars, I think, as former President Obama, I think, says the Oscars of the colleges. And so that tells you the prestige it has. And when Mario would talk about it, he was bold in his assertion that we can get that. I like that about it, you know? And so some of the work, I think some of the things that go in terms of the board, we want to be able to support, we want to be able to, you know, first of all, create a lot of transparency, you know, stated-driven, you know, it's and the community knows what we're achieving, what we're going for. I mean, all those things, aspects that really are very popular and really makes us excited to be part of it. It's an amazing endeavor, you know? And so also, because we're I think, I think we talked tomorrow, planning about benchmarks and KPIs and stuff. And mainly because I'm, I had a chair in that committee on goals evaluations, where I have a couple that Mike assigned me for the chancellor's goals and evaluations. So the retreat was a perfect opportunity for us to really get a deep dive, like I said, into the work as involved, I mean, to get us where we are now. So anyway, I just wanted to start by saying a kudos to everybody involved, and appreciate that. Anybody else? Anyone else wants to give a report?
Thank you. The chancellor mentioned the retiree celebration, which was held at the community building here. And that was indeed a very nice event. And two guest speakers, Dr. Greg Livingston and Mr. Liam Blakeway, did a great job for that event. So I really enjoyed being there. Also, there was the chancellor's donor appreciation luncheon that the foundation held, and we heard eight different essays from students who were receiving scholarships. Total of 16 students received scholarships that day, but we heard fantastic essays from eight of them. What really stuck with me, in addition to the essays, which were just outstanding, was that since 1991, the LSC Foundation has awarded $23.2 million to 24,500 students. Isn't that remarkable? I mean, that's just outstanding. And 10 million in program support. So I tip my cap to the foundation, the directors, the donors, and of course, Nicole Robinson-Golchay for the work that she does. And then finally, I had an opportunity to go to a gala that was put on by the Woodlands Rotary Club, where they honored Stephen Lind ahead. And at that gala, Dr. Reed Hart did a fantastic job with a video that gave a lot of background with regard to that honor. So it was fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, and let me reiterate what trustee Kane said. I too, okay, from DC, I don't want to forget anything, to the donors' celebration with the students, which was really a knockout, to the retiree's celebration. And what else? I've been meeting the chancellor. I feel like we just connected some kind of way, and now we head it to prayer review. But what he didn't tell you, I thought we were just going to be spectators until Nathaniel called me and told me, no, you have to be in regalia. I said, why? He said, because you're part of a procession. I don't know how I got roped into this. Maybe it's because we are on our fifth generation in my family of prayer review. And I'll know in a couple of years if that fifth generation graduates. But it's been four generations of prayer view graduates in my family, and now we're on the fifth. But anyway, I think I have Nathaniel to thank. I need to buy my walking shoes, bring my walking shoes, because I don't know how long or how far this procession is going to be. And anyway, I'm happy to go. I think it's a great thing.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Appreciate that. Anyone else? No? Okay. All right, so we will now move forward with the consideration of our consent agenda. Right, in our place, yeah. At this point, I want to ask the trustees if there's any items you want to consider separately. And the items, yes, sir?
Thank you. Item number one, please, if we could pull it just for a quick comment.
Okay, any others? Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and we can vote first. We vote on it first. Okay. Yeah, okay, so I will need a motion to on the, on item two to seven. Do I have a motion? We have a motion second? We have a second? And do we have any discussion on two to seven? Okay, so I'll go ahead and do what? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion passes. Item approved. And now we'll go ahead and go to item one. From the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Do we need one? Do we need a motion?
Motion, second.
Second? I need a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second and discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. The PRC met, and I just want to make a quick couple of comments. Following a request from Chair Stoma on January 25th, the Policy Review Committee, which was composed of myself, trustee Kane, and trustee Broussard, electronically reviewed proposed changes to the college's installment payment plan policy. Vice Chancellor of Administration Finance, Kristi Vien, proposed these changes for the PRC's review to allow the college more flexibility in how it offers payment plans to students. The PRC reviewed clean and redline versions of the proposed policy, and on January 26, 2024, approved the policy to proceed to the board for consideration. The proposed policy revisions are included in action item one of tonight's meeting agenda. And if anyone has any questions, we have staff resource available. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, okay, so now we can vote on that item. All those in favor? Say aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Item approved, motion approved. Thank you. And then now we move to financial report. Dr. Vien, there you are. Please proceed to the podium. I know you saw plenty of us at the board retreat, so.
I hope you're not tired of seeing me yet.
See us again. No, we enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
And thank you for supporting the change on the payment plans as well. That really helps support our students and our late-term ad students, so we do appreciate your support in that item, so. So moving to the slides and in your packet. So the financial statements for the month end, January 31st. As a reminder, this is as of effective January 31st month end. So even though we're in March, we're still looking at the financials for closeout for the last day of January. And as of that time, we were at 77.1% of total revenue expected or budgeted had been received. Obviously, that is a trend upward of what we have seen in past years. And we'll get into the details of that in a further slide. When we're looking at the expenditures, we're actually tracking in the right direction there as well. We're actually tracking below where we have been, which is, can be a good thing or a bad thing. We want to make sure that the campuses are using the budgets allocated and the resources. So this is typically normal for this. So we, this is typically normal for this time of year, but we are right on track a little bit below where we were this time last year, but, Cyril, nothing to be concerned with. When we're moving into the financial statements for the January thirty-first, you have the over highlighted items there, but I do want to point out a couple additional things just for your review. We have talked about it a couple of times, that you can see, we show the variance here of the state appropriations being eight point four above what was budgeted. FY twenty-four state revenue budget was eighty-nine million. The forecast of what we should receive according to the state appropriations is just north of ninety-seven point seven nine million. And again, that is a variance of eight point four million, not to steal next month's thunder, but we did receive the second payment, February fifteenth, in state appropriations, which was the twenty-four point four million that we expected to receive. So we have received that. You will see that reflected next month, but I know that was a question that had come up, so we did receive the second of the three pay. And so again, total state receipts to date was seventy-three point three million. So again, that is not necessarily reflective of the thirty-first, but I know that was a question, so we wanted to highlight that. We also saw tuition and fee revenue increase fifty-five point eight million in January, and that was due to spring registration. So what you're seeing there as our fiscal year to date is trending where we're supposed to be, because we just had spring registration, and those payments typically come in in December and January. When you're looking at the property tax revenue, we did receive property tax income of eighty-eight point one million in December and eighty-three million in January for payment, which is getting us to the approximately one seventy-six million in taxes year to date. So I just wanted to go into a little bit more detail to highlight some of those key things that we saw in the month of January in terms of our revenue receivables. And looking at the financials statement as it relates to expenditures, there wasn't really anything outlier to highlight today, but that is a overview of the thirty-six point seven percent of budgeted expenses and where we are in fiscal year to date, January thirty-first. In your packet, you also have a copy of the building and ground report for your review, and I'm also happy to answer any questions regarding the financials or any other information you may need.
Chair, I have a question, if I may. This is, I don't expect you to answer this today, but this is sort of a part from what your report. I want to know if you could, if you could sort of give us an update of the FEMA reimbursement, maybe next month? Unless you know something now, then.
No, I'm happy to provide that for you additionally. So we do typically get updates on that as we receive payments, so I'll be sure to include a thorough summary of that for you next month.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy to. Any other questions from the trustees? Okay.
Any other questions, trustees? No? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and as far as the building grounds report? There any questions on that? I just want to, no, nobody? Okay.
I'd like an update on where, what the status is of the the satellite facility we're we're supposed to be building out in the Magnolia area.
The C Mar for that should be forthcoming in the May Board Agenda item.
The what?
The May Board Agenda item for that project, so it's on target, and we're moving forward with that project for Magnolia. Or the construction authorization. We're we're still on target for the date of completion. There should be a highlight in your packet with exact information on that.
Okay.
So we are still on target for substantial completion in summer twenty twenty-five, and so we're still on target for that completion, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Any other?
No, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Before we go to close session, I just want to see if any board members, any committee chairs have any reports today? No? No? Okay. I have a, just a, I guess, a, for the record, mentioned that my committee, the Chancellor's Goals and Evaluation, trustee Wilson agreed to fill in for trustee Sullivan in that, so I appreciate your help in this, and that, so. Trustee Kane, for trustee Kane, you, thank you, so. So it's for the record, right, I needed to mention that, so. That's it. Okay, so now we will go to the close session. Let's see. Oh, there it is. Yeah, okay, okay. The board of trustees, in accordance with section five-five-one-oh-oh-one of the Texas Government Code, will move into close session under one of the, one or more of the following provisions of the Act, section five-five-five, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, section five-five-one-oh-seven-two, section five-five-one-oh-seven-four, and section five-five-one-oh-seven-six. So when we adjourn, or we can no, I'm saying right now, we're gonna, we're gonna go into close session. We don't, we don't have any other business to discuss afterwards, so you don't have to go home. And you don't have to leave either. You can stay, so thank you so much. That's it. Oh, what I did, one of my goals is to make each fall in a one-seater. As far as agenda items, any, final one, suggested future agenda items, any suggestions for anyone? Okay, with no further business to discuss, this board meeting is now adjourned at seven thirty-five.